Okay, we're gonna call the panel select board meeting to order Thursday, January 18th at 7:00 PM. The agenda approval, approval of the minutes of 12:28, 17. Warrants, mail, administrative assistant report, old business town plan, BCRC skipper road project agreement, alarm system quotes for town office, town attorney discussion, road budget, gravel purchase, and under new business, general budget preliminary fiscal year nineteen figures, and board's ballot articles for March.
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Anything to be added? Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Who were the minutes of 12:28, 17?
No more.
Any discussion on them? We got a motion to second.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? None? Third, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Warrants. See if I can... Not, 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 not in the water. Costs payable ending 1/19/18 in the amount of $19,424.2. Big chunks on this with salt, $3,875 and $1,900. Not that we've been using any salt.
Yeah.
Okay. Costs payable, ending 1/12/18, in the amount of $25,036. And this one, I think. Yep, check the sheets. $12,000 in salt, $12,400 and something. That was the big deal.
That salt was a reissue check.
Oh, this is the one that...
Yeah, it was compromised.
Okay. This is the accounts payable, ending 1/5/18, in the amount of $10,078.71. And this has the IRS for over $3,000, salt for $1,800, and indoor air quality for $1,500 check. Payroll, ending 1/19/18, in the amount of $8,016.70. Payroll, ending 1/12/18, in the amount of $8,429.37. Payroll, ending 1/05/18, in the amount of $9,256.90. What's your price for guys?
I move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Mail.
Is that the skippery project?
Yes, it's not in the mail. I just wanna make sure it wasn't something in the mail. Okay, mail. We have a memo from our... Who used to be our lister, Barb Schlesinger. And she wants, "Please accept this as a notice of my formal resignation from the position of lister effective January 5th, 2018. I would like to thank everyone for their support, and I enjoy my work here very much. I will miss the position and the many friends I have made. The town of Ponle is a good town with many good people. It has been my pleasure working for them. What's your motion to accept or regret?"
So I move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, panel tax administration, delinquent tax report. With penalties and interest, is $339,961.14. This is the... From the BCR meeting agenda for January 18th. At the Park House at the Manchester Recreational Center on Route 30. There will be a discussing on forest resource planning, using conservation designs, and there's a bunch of coverage with the corridors and so forth in this document. Again, that's Thursday, January 18th, at the Park House at Manchester Recreation Center. Which is today.
It is today, isn't it?
Bill Scully. "This mission requests an amendment to the capacity of the Ponle Tannery hydroelectric plant on the Huzick River in Ponle, Vermont. The purpose of the filing is to reflect the commissioned and tested nameplate capacity of a 491 kilowatt rather than 500 kilowatt currently in the exemption." Thank you. Please, see, okay. Everybody got a chance to read through that. We need to set the mileage reimbursement for 2018 at 54.5 cents. I get a motion for the board to approve the pace to move to town.
Second.
Any, any discussion on it? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Now we have the Benning County Sheriff. I have all the papers. I don't have the actual short report he usually gives.
That's the log.
It's just a log. Do we have a short report?
We had that with the billing last month.
Oh, so we did it.
I came with the billing this month. I just ripped the bill off, paid it, threw up the log.
Okay. Mount Department Forest Park and Recreation, Cherry Snickerewini. On behalf of the panel select board, this is to do with... Let's just state what this is. Proposal to get a forest and parks recreational grant for trails. Doesn't mean we'll get it, but they're looking for us to support them in this effort. Jim Sullivan and others that have been working on this development down at, down where the wastewater is for the trail that runs along the river there and some of the others. They'd have to get the grant, and then we'll have to go through some of the actual design work and talk with them after that point. What's your pleasure? Do you wish to send this? Motion for me to sign.
I make a motion to sign it.
I'll second it.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes? And this is the delinquent sewer tax we have. And the total for that with interest and penalties is $16,626.21. Administrative assistant report.
Census Bureau boundary survey was submitted on January 4th. The valid article research wording for the road fund was completed as requested. Green Lantern Solar forwarded three proposals for the board to consider. They're in your packets for you to take with you. Maybe in mid-February, we can have them back because we need to finish our budget right now. The mold assessment report is also included in the board's packets this evening. Please review it closely for the mold remediation recommendations. I had the gas company clean the heating units at the town office yesterday in accordance with the specified standards. The environmental report arrived for the outbuilding slated for demolition. The building is free of asbestos materials. The town may remove the building itself or rebid it. The permit and the report are required to be submitted to the state and EPA regardless. And the rear safe ceiling that I was talking about a while ago does contain asbestos material. And the report should be available soon with an estimated cost for the work involved for a public building. I've started to prepare the town meeting warning, and the copier was ordered. It was placed on Monday and should be seven to 10 days before the rights. That's my report. Any questions?
So on the billing that's been approved for demo, can we, could we approve those? Could we choose one of those bids and just have it done?
You rejected them.
What's that?
You rejected them.
Okay, so they'd have to be rebid again?
Yeah, they do.
Okay.
Either we can do it ourselves, right?
Exactly.
Well, I think we need it, something needs to be done right away.
Well, we can do it ourselves, is that what I heard?
See, why not? Just get a contract with TM, any help with a container. Have them bring one over, take your excavator, crunch it, and put it in. Be done with it.
It's gonna take very long for that.
So what...
Give the guy practice.
So what do we need to do? Contact...
TM, tell him you need a container.
You just have to fill out the permit application and send it.
Okay. I make a motion, we do that.
Second.
As soon as possible.
Linda, fill out the permit. Send it in. Once we get the permit, then we'll notify TM.
I'll notify him if you want. When we're ready to go.
He's gonna coordinate it.
He's gonna coordinate it. Second?
I already did.
Second. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, Linda. What else? Anything else from the report you wish to discuss? Yeah?
Okay. I'd like to discuss that mold by a later date. I wanna put, I don't wanna put it on the back.
Wanna know a little more about it?
Yeah. I know we found out some more information on it, so.
Okay.
But I wanted the board to take, take it with them and really read it again.
Okay, sounds good. Under old business, town plan, Mike Slattery.
Right. First of all, I just wanna say it's a pleasure to be here and not asking you for money. I thought you'd find that pleasurable, too.
We do.
I know it's rare that I show up here, usually with my hand out. So as many of you know, and if you don't know, the planning commission approved the proposed town plan on January 2nd at a special meeting at the library down in Ponle unanimously. We had, we combined a special meeting with another hearing, public hearing. So after the second public hearing, and then working through some changes after that, we decided to have a third hearing, which is unusual, but we did it. And everybody must've been happy because nobody showed up for that one. It was one of the few nights there was good weather and everything else. So it was approved, and as you know, as Linda points out, you guys have done this before. That starts the clock ticking, so to speak. Thirty days after our approval, you can hold your first hearing if you're ready to do that. Generally between 30 and 120 days is when the hearings are supposed to be wrapped up. However, if you don't hold them all, and I could regret saying this, you have up to a year, actually, to do it. According to municipal planning guide. The thing that I'll stress is that, you know, things have changed quite a bit since you had your last hearings for a town plan. And if you read through the adoption, it may be the same or basically the same, but the warnings are clear. They have to be 15 calendar days before the hearing. And the select board can make changes right up to 15 days before the final hearing. You need two hearings because we exceed population of 2,500. If we had 2,499, you could get away with one hearing, but we unfortunately have gone by that, or fortunately. So you can have them consecutively, you can have them on the night you have your regular meeting, as you know. You can have them one night after another, or separated by a week or a month, or whatever. But the thing is that now, as I said to Nelson, it's your plan to do with it what you want, literally. You can change it, you can throw it out, you can literally change sections of it, but they're the select board's changes. In essence, you don't hand it back to the planning commission and say, "Here, please change this." That's not how it works. What you, the only reason the planning commission to get involved again is to make sure, according to the statutes, that the changes that the select board makes pass muster with the state and the county. That's all. So, you know, we would sit and go through it, and then report back to you and say, "Yep, you can change that," or "No, you can't change that, and, and here's why." So upon completion of your second, your second public hearing, you can have a vote. You can convene a meeting that night to have a vote. And if, if you vote unanimously, it passes and it's adopted, okay? And I know I'm preaching to the choir here for, for most people, but I just wanted to go over that, that timeline with you. Now, once it is adopted, and of course, I know it only took seven or eight years to get it done, but now I want it done like yesterday, but for some, but for some good reasons. You know, as soon as it's adopted, and as soon as we have it registered with the state and everything else, you know, we can move ahead on village designations. We will have some degree of special deference in the energy section for citing of solar and wind and things like that. I say some degree because, as I told you last time I was here, we have to immediately begin the work to amend that section. So you're gonna pass the whole thing, assuming you do, and then we're gonna start working with the BCRC on a grant that they received to amend the energy section because of legislation passed at the end of, or middle to end of last year. We didn't have time really to react to that. It is a work-intensive project, I can tell you. Not only going over maps, but, you know, literally figuring out not just where we don't want these things, but literally the state wants to know where they could be. So, and nowhere in your town is not an option. So we've got a lot of work to do on that. And to tell you the truth, we're gonna start, even though you haven't passed your end of it yet, I'm gonna meet with Michael Batchor next week. He is coming to a work session the first Tuesday that we have of February, and he needs this thing wrapped up so he can use his grant by June. I'm not sure that's really feasible, but we'll do the best we can to wrap up a very difficult section that I think is gonna come under a lot of public scrutiny here in town. So anyway, just to, just to bring you up to date on that. The other thing is that once you, once you pass your end of it, if, and I think you read this, Nelson, at the end of the plan is an implementation chart that's about 25 pages long. And it's a pretty aggressive undertaking. And it's gonna mean the formation of committees, it's gonna mean the appointment of an energy coordinator and an energy committee. The energy coordinator will be appointed by the select board, will act as an ex officio, non-voting member of the planning commission. I'm not sure about the economic committee. There's possibly the same chair of that, or the committee chairperson of that might also act as that. And there are people interested in it, and I'm sure you'll start to get letters and things that are, you know, people that wanna come in and talk to you about those things. And we welcome all of those people, definitely. What I would say to you is, is you appoint people, make sure they're people that just don't have an agenda other than helping this town out, and make sure they're people that are willing to work. Roll up their sleeves, spend a fair amount of time getting this stuff done, because if they're just there to sit, if they're just there to promote their own agenda, nothing will get done, and then the people that are there to get things done will feel as though they're doing all the work, and we'll have trouble keeping people. So, so that in a nutshell is kind of, yeah. I, I think, Linda, when I asked you, you have this guide, so you're all set there. You now know as much about it when you read that as I do, you know? But anyway, any questions? Oh, Michael Batchor sends his best. He, of course, is at that meeting. So, yeah, he was gonna be here, and I've, I've talked to him 10 times recently, and there's not, there was nothing he was gonna add other than the timeline to answer any questions you might have. I mean, if you have specific questions about the plan as you read through it, absolutely give me a call. If I'm not available, call Batchor. He knows it inside out. He really does. And I wish you guys the best of luck with it. I hope you have a, I hope you have a hearing 31 days after we approved it. Linda.
Can we, can we get electronic copy of this sent to us?
Yes. I have an electronic copy that I can forward to all of you.
Thank you. Just makes it easy.
Yeah, the, the planning commission got electronic copies. You guys got the bound copies.
Which is okay. We can look through these, too. It's just that with my situation, I can look through it electronically a lot faster.
Yeah, absolutely. That's funny, I'd rather have the written one myself, but... Okay, any, any questions? If not, we'll let you guys get back to work.
No, thank you very much. Thanks for all the hard work.
Yeah, you bet.
We know it's...
Good luck with this.
You said it took some time, but it's a lot of hard work there, and a lot of people put a lot of time.
Yeah, they sure did. The planning commission did a great job on this, so.
Very good.
Yeah. All right.
Thank you. BCRC skippery road project agreement here. Joe, you wanna tell us about this, or is this just something that...
It's for a culvert in check dams at the bottom of, kinda like hill road, kinda right in there.
Okay. So one with the big, it's got a large drop-off on that one side?
Yes, yes. They wanna deepen it some, put a little bigger culvert in, and stone line the ends, and then they're gonna get the youth core in to do the check dams.
The one that wrote, that wrote it, right?
They're gonna pay for all the materials. We're gonna do the work in youth core, in the check dams.
Sounds like a good plan to me. What's your pleasure, guys?
Motion to sign it.
Second to do that?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alarm system quotes, town office, town garage. Everybody seen this? Let me pass it down that way, I'll let you guys, and we'll talk about it afterwards. Let you guys look at it, too.
Almost half of that installation cost is the fire alarm panel, the permit for the state, and the inspection by the state.
Did you find a place to put that panel?
Yep. There's only one place here that they're gonna move.
That's what he said. He might have to move some things down the corner.
Right.
Okay, we basically have a quote to do the town office with a fire alarm, an alarm system, security system, and also a quote for the town of Ponle town garage for an alarm system and a security system. You seen this, Joe?
Jason showed it to me.
Okay. You have any comments towards, towards this? Is there a need, not a need, at the garage?
It'd be a good idea. We've been broken into a couple times, I guess, for my time.
Put you on the hot seat. Would you recommend us to move forward with this?
If you please.
You're a politician already.
I was gonna say, he's learning from the best.
Up to you, fellas.
I know it's up to us, fellas, but you, is this something that you consider as an appropriate thing to do at this time over there?
Yes, I guess.
Okay.
I got a question. How sensitive is that? You know what I mean? Are we gonna get a lot of false alarms? Somebody gonna have to go over there and shut it off? Or the keypad, or whatever you gotta do? Is this thing super sensitive, or is it...
Some of them are.
Usually they're magnets.
Huh?
Usually they're magnets.
Right. There's magnets on the doors, and there's a motion detector, and then there's, and then there's a keypad system. So each employee has a, has a number. So when they walk into the building, they type in their number, it records it, and it shuts the alarm system off.
Mice will set it off, so you gotta watch what you do.
I said, I was curious about, is if this is, well, I don't know.
I think we could ask the guy, 'cause I'm sure this...
We have the same thing with Legion. As long as you pick up everything, it's not too bad.
I mean, this is the same...
Who's gonna shut it, who's gonna, what if it's a false alarm? What happens?
We send you...
You can go back home.
Well, somebody's got it.
No, there's a list of key holders. There's, included in that $300 a year is, is the monitoring. It goes to a central monitoring agency.
But the central monitoring agency has to have a number they call.
That's right.
And you gotta come and go through it.
That's right. That's right, yes.
Chairman, it's the chairman.
Right. We'd have to provide them with a list of key holders, or, you know, authorize people to answer the alarm. But if it's a burglar alarm, they're not gonna call, they're gonna call the state police.
Usually at the end of the month, you get a sheet.
That's right.
And it tells us everybody that came in, and what time they came in. So you got a record of who's coming in and out.
At what time?
Yeah.
That's only at the beginning, and then at the end of the day, when...
During the day when it's open, you don't need it, but...
Yeah. What's your pleasure?
I make a motion, we install both systems.
Second to that?
Second.
What does it cost to add, again?
Seventeen.
It's $1,745 for the town office, $1,795 for the garage, and it's the same price for the annual fire alarm monitoring, which is $336 for each one.
That's for each one?
Yes. Two separate accounts.
Yes, so...
Maybe $600 outside of here, two blocks.
Yeah.
Because everybody has alarm systems of some sort, you know, nowadays, in your homes and everything.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sure that, well, even I have one. It don't cost anywhere near that.
Yeah, I wonder what the...
That's, I'm just saying, throwing it out there.
Do you have, you have somebody that calls you up when your alarm goes off? Is that what you're saying?
I don't know.
The dog.
Never went off.
No.
They don't have burglars down there in Northbound.
I won't even go there.
I do have the keypad, and I got the, you know, it's magnets on the windows and doors and things like that.
And the motion detector.
And there's a motion det, and smoke detector, and heat detector in the house, period. But, like I say, it's never been, been triggered, so I don't know how they work it. I was just curious, that's all. It's no...
Yearly.
He's, he gave us some references. He does, he does... He does, uh, he does Legion, he does the south fire station, he does the school, he does the, uh...
Does the daycare.
The daycare. I mean, he's...
So, he's done a number of places.
Yeah, he does.
He's a pretty good guy to work with.
Very reputable. And there's many options, you know, he can, we, you know, as far as, you know, the recording of the entry in and out, there's, there's many different ways we can set that up, however we wanna do it. You know, come through an email and...
How do you feel?
Originally, we only talked about a burglar system. But he, he made the recommendation that, you know, a building like this, you know...
Got enough records in here.
We've got enough records in here. We need to do the best we can to, to...
Respire.
To protect it. And I think the highway garage, too. I mean, that's a, we've got some equipment in there now, expensive tools. I mean, I think it's, we need to do the best we can to protect it, you know, however we...
What do you think, Linda? You're gonna be the one that's probably gonna poke that alarm once in a while when you come in through the door?
Well, I wanna know who's, who's gonna be the one that they're calling to. These things go off. I might not be here.
You may get sheriff's department...
Somebody, somebody, I mean, we can, we can give them a list of key holders.
Usually what they do is...
I don't, you know, we don't really understand how it all works, but...
When the alarm goes off, they have call numbers. First one, second one, then they call the police.
Yeah.
So, they're not gonna go down the list and call each, each one you got there.
How do they know whether it's a false alarm or not?
They don't. Alarm goes off, rings at where their computer is, and they call you back and send somebody.
Right.
Send who?
Whoever's on the list.
Right. Well, if it's a burglar alarm, they're gonna send the police. If it's a fire alarm, they're gonna send the fire department, right.
Well, yeah, well, basi, basically, I think part of that is who we want to put on the list.
Right.
If we wanna put the sheriff for the burglary alarm, because we pay for the sheriff, he'd be the one that they'd contact. If it's the fire, we want the fire department notified. As the first on the list, I would think is the way to go.
Yes.
But, you know, that's, that's a decision we would make as we set up the alarm.
Well, here, it's the instigator, somebody here most of the time anyway during the day. So, they call a number, and somebody should answer the phone. 'Cause any places I've ever been where they have alarms and stuff, sometimes I set them off.
Yeah, they call.
Open the door I wasn't supposed to open, or he didn't tell me that one, you know, I come up from the cellar and it went off. And they call right away, they call that number and they, you know, I happen to be there, I answer the thing, of course. And then they, they ask for, uh, you've got a...
The code.
A code, well, not only, they ask for, they ask for...
Password.
Some of them got a, a name, you know, their dog's name or something. They ask for that. You tell them what that is, tell them who you are, and you're...
The one we have, there's, there's a...
Password.
Yep.
Yeah, password, that's what I'm trying to say.
And if you give them the password, the problem's yours. They shut it off and away you go. But if you have the state police come, there's quite a charge if they start coming in.
And like I say, I don't think it's too bad during the daytime. Here, or over there, there's usually somebody over that garage, ain't they, during the day?
Yes.
So, I mean, trying to help, yeah. Everybody should be responsible to answer the phone.
Well, I think that's fine for daytime hours. I think what'll happen is, is who do they call on the off-hours and that's the ones...
Is this gonna have an alarm bell or...
Yes.
Outside somewhere?
It's got, uh, it says right there, there's, there's a strobe light and even in the bathroom, there has to be one in the bathroom. I mean...
There's a horn.
No outside, no outside alarm.
Horn, horn and a strobe.
Them sirens are unreal.
So, it says...
Yeah, I know.
Horn, and you'll hear 'em. All right. I have, I have a motion, I have a second, uh, we're sort of discussing in circles now. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pos, nays? So curious, okay. That one's done, too. Yay. Okay.
Can you take care of notifying him that was approved? Thanks.
Town attorney discussion. Is this, uh, this the first I've seen of this, so... What's the...
I read the recommendations here. I'd like to meet this gentleman that's recommended from Wilmington. Maybe set a time where he could come in and...
You seem very nice, like you would be nice to work with and highly recommended. Jason Morrissey, highly recommended him. Attorney O'Day from Manchester, highly recommended him.
Let's meet him.
There's also another guy from, I think it was Burlington, Charles. He was willing to come down as well.
The, the former assistant attorney?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Well, let's, you wanna do two? I think that's fine, too. You wanna have a couple of them come down and talk to us, make up our mind?
I think it'd be difficult to deal with an attorney from Burlington, don't you?
What, does he have an office somewhere else, too?
No. Actually, actually, you would, I would use him like we use Paul Gillis for specialized or something.
Let's meet the...
I would keep him in mind for something like that.
Legal?
I would think he would watch someone close.
Let's, let's talk to the guy that's close by first, and if it doesn't work out, then we'll talk to somebody else. But let's talk to him first.
Yep, sounds good.
Okay. Uh, robot, gravel...
When do you wanna do that? I don't wanna schedule anything until this budget is done in the morning.
I agree.
Yeah, it's gonna be...
Our meetings have to be work-oriented and cut back the other business.
You're probably looking at March. We're almost out of January now. February, you gotta get all your articles together and written.
February, you're writing your articles now. I don't know where you're getting this February stuff. You better go back to your schedule. Our town morning, our town morning needs to be complete and adopted by this board for February one is the absolute cutoff. You have, like, three meetings.
Okay.
Okay?
Done.
I was thinking maybe, maybe in February have them in because you're gonna need an attorney. You know, especially if you wanna start talking gravel purchases and you have contract reviews.
Contracts and stuff.
Yeah, you're gonna have to have somebody, so...
Bring him in.
Okay, thank you. Actually, I would like to do a special meeting so that it's not a meeting night. What nights are you not available? Wednesday, did you say?
Wednesdays, the last two Wednesdays of the month, or I should say the third and fourth Wednesday of the month, I'm not available.
A Tuesday fine?
Tuesday works. Monday works better.
Monday or Tuesday.
I know this office is used a lot on Tuesday, so maybe Monday.
You'll have to work around schedules. Is that okay with the rest of the board? Monday or Tuesday, a special meeting to, to talk to an attorney and see if you want to hire him?
Well, I'd rather see that on the air. Let the people know what the guy is. I don't care.
Doesn't bother me. I think...
All I hear is, is all executive sessions, nobody knows nothing, so...
Put it on the air.
Can he come down on Monday?
I don't know. Cat TV. Cat TV, available on, for Monday.
To record on a Monday?
I'd have to check. It depend on the day and what are the meetings we have. But we have other, we do have other select board meetings and a few others on Mondays. So, depending on the day, I can check to see if someone's available.
Either that or I just do it on the regular Thursday. It's turning into a...
Well, you can fi, find out whether there's any Mondays that he can record, and if there is, then...
Yeah, if there is, it doesn't matter if it's a delayed broadcast.
Yeah, that'll work fine, and we'll schedule it for one of those. And if it doesn't work that way, then we'll schedule it for a Thursday.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, this will be in February sometime.
Yep, we should, uh...
February also, we're going to, we, we are needed at the treatment plant for our meeting. We will be doing our budget, which will be approved in March, so you can plan definitely for a February meeting, fourth meeting.
Okay.
The meeting for this month, we're gonna use it for the select board meeting special.
Okay. And we've got a Tuesday...
Tuesday I've just scheduled for you.
The twenty-third, for budget only.
Next week, yes.
Okay, good. We can finish it up, hopefully, in the budget then. Not that Thursday night, for sure. It's gotta be done.
I'd be happy to see the road completely done this evening.
Okay. I think we all would. Okay, road budget, gravel purchase, general budget, preliminary, okay, figures, and ballot articles.
I mean, as far as your, um, your road goes, you have preliminary figures, just like we started with, um, the road. Everything that Ellen and I are aware of, we've already put in.
Well, we have the road budget. Everybody has it in front of them. It was part of the package, right?
Yes, it's the same one that you were, that you looked at before. All I do is copy mine, 'cause we didn't change anything. Joel, I gave you a, I gave you a copy up here to work with.
Okay.
From be, from before, where we left off.
So, why'd you come on up to that?
I think, I think we need to, to pick up where we left off before. You were gonna look into quotes for a couple of items and we were gonna talk about gravel and we were gonna talk about creating a ballot article for the capital project fund.
Capital project. Let's talk about that a minute. The way we're doing it now, uh, suppose you get a road grant for Blacktop. Actually, it's not working out too bad because we have a hundred and fifty thousand, say, in the road, in, in the Blacktop account. If we do happen to get one, um, you know, and you have to take twenty, forty thousand out, or whatever, um, for our share, why not leave it that way? We'll take it out of the Blacktop fund.
We're not talking about the Blacktop?
No, you're talking about, you're talking about...
Capital Road Fund.
Capital Road Fund.
The Blacktop, I agree. You leave it the way it is. What I'm talking about is capital projects you do, like these grants you do, where we have to put money up and so forth, like these culverts and things we're doing. That's where I'm talking about setting aside some, some money for. We have some money in some different funds.
Yeah, I agree with you.
But there, but there's a surprise once in a while, like, all of a sudden, you have to come up with thirty thousand dollars for something. We should have a capital fun for that, project fund for that, so people don't get shocked with an extra forty thousand bucks in the year because we overspent or something. We sort of do that with equipment. We do that with Blacktop now.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Because we have those as funds.
Yeah.
And I think a capital project, and the goal is, is that the board doesn't spend that capital project money on anything other than these special projects that come up. That's why I think that the project is the way you gotta word it. Otherwise...
Well, I kinda thought about what Ronnie said and stuff, and I think that's what happens a lot of times. You got this money sitting there and, and...
And people grab it for something they shouldn't.
Yeah, yeah.
That's, that's why I think what you need to do is, is, you know, this is to meet those special projects. It's not gonna be Blacktop, it's not gonna be equipment.
Yep.
It's more of the hundred thousand dollars we almost lost, or something of that nature, that I feel that we need. You know, if you look at the budget, road budget this year, yes, it only went up by looking at this thing about fifty-three thousand dollars. But when you look at the fact that we had a hundred and some odd thousand rolled over last year...
Yeah, yeah.
You know, that, that budget, even though it doesn't look like it went up much here, but tax-wise, it's gonna hit, hit people.
Yeah.
And I think that we had some things to do with grants for, like the culverts and things like that, that, and other projects. I think we're, it's just a, it's a buffer, is really what it is. And I'm not talking about putting hundreds of thousands of dollars in there, see the guys.
We have a cover fund, don't we?
Yeah, we do a cover fund, but I'm talking about other projects. I'm thinking about the one that they're gonna do on Lad Road with this, what's coming up for repair because of the new bills that's passed by the state to do with water. Those are the sort of things we don't even know about yet, and those are the ones that you need money setting aside. And I don't think we want, again, I'm not talking about being like the equipment of Blacktop, we put hundreds of thousands of dollars in there. I think if you get twenty-five, up to twenty-five thousand dollars in there, you leave it alone. You use it, and then as it goes down, then you put money back into it. That's, that's the sort of, I'm not looking to create hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars in a project fund. I think we have enough of those between the buildings and all the other stuff we have. We have tons of money like that. But that's, that's where I'm at. It's just that, uh, 'cause we don't know what those things are. We know what the Blacktop is. We know what the equipment's gonna be. And salt and the other things, it's the, it's the surprise things that you don't know about that this is for on the roadside. And Lord knows, they're passing all kinds of bills every year up there that makes us spend more money.
We also know how much we can spend going in. That's the only point I got. We know how much money we can spend. You know, maybe a small tax increase, people won't scream. But taxes have increased steadily for the last fifteen years.
But where, though?
It's increased.
But, no, no, but... But at the school, yeah.
Three quarters of a million dollars. Road budget.
Yeah.
And that three quarters of a million dollars, it seems to me, it should be enough. We should barrel the plan. You may call me conservative or whatever, we should barrel the plan so we don't have to have another puppy hanging around. I mean, uh, sometimes we're...
What does that mean?
Having a bunch of money hanging around doing nothing. 'Cause that money is people, we're taking it out of people. Did you look at the taxes thing? Three hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. I looked at that. There were some names in there that I wouldn't expect to be in there. So, things aren't as good as we try to think they are. And I mean, all I wanna be is a little bit conservative, you know, if you, uh...
Well, that's why...
'Cause we've rolled over, like you just said, we've rolled over a hundred and some thousand dollars. All right? So, all right, it only went up fifty. Well, it did, it went up a hundred fifty, 'cause we spent it.
'Cause all we rolled over this year, according to this, is sixteen thousand. I mean, so you've got a hundred and twenty there that you...
But in reality, remember that it, you're reimbursed. It's a reimbursement, and now you're putting the money back where you took it from, from the fund. So, you have to stop looking at it as...
Yeah, it's, it's not a new cost in the sense it, and guess what? We don't get reimbursed unless we have the money to spend when we need to do it.
Your project, right.
So, so we have to have it there. And I, and I don't know, I was looking at this capital project thing, and I was only thinking of ten thousand bucks this year. That's a half a cent. I mean, it's a half a cent's a lot of money, but, but it's a half a cent, 'cause we're asking for the people to prepare us to maybe save them two to three cents in the long run.
You have sixteen thousand, I think, for undesignated funds. Ellen and I had a discussion about you could start this with zero funds and put it in next time if it's so voted, or you could take five, ten thousand. I was thinking taking ten thousand from undesignated and giving the rest back to tax stabilization for the voters.
I, I...
At least you have ten.
Yeah, we don't anymore.
Start it with five.
Yeah.
But we have to know in order to move forward.
What's your thoughts, folks?
I, I, you know, do you, do you think we have enough money in there for, for gravel this year?
Well, that's another discussion.
Well, I mean, there's a number of things here, I think, I think, I think you gotta look at the whole picture, Ronnie, and you gotta look at, we're, we're behind the ball here a little bit on some of our projects. You know, we've put off a lot for a long time. I think we know the state, you know, state's expecting.
Only because we have to, because it's a poor community, not because we wanted to.
Okay, well, regardless, I mean.
We could've spent a lot more money, we've got a lot of nice stuff now. We're, we're going in the right direction.
I agree.
I don't wanna see us go too far.
Right.
Because I mean, it's just like that fellow that applied for one of them road, uh, crew yachts. He says, hey, he lives right up in that area, he says, when I came here, there was nothing up here. Now you got a nice garage, you got a nice salt shed, you got a sand shed, you got decent equipment. When, uh, when I was here, uh, a few years back and not too many years back, all the town owned was the rate. That's all we had. Which is sad, I mean, now we do have this stuff, but this also entails, and we do have, and it's an old, old town. The people in this town are old. You know, there's some that got good jobs, but not too many, most of them are on retirement.
Oh, they are.
And all I'm saying, I don't mind if we put a little bit of money in that. And say, all right, it's a little, and, and we keep track of it. If we don't spend it, well, then we don't have to dump a whole bunch of money in again. That's the point that I'm saying.
Me too.
If you got, if you build it up to say twenty-five thousand dollars or whatever, all right, we ain't gotta put no more in if we didn't spend any.
That's why I'm.
Let's keep it under control a little bit, because, uh, you know, it's, we gotta have, look at this in a, in a good logical way. I, I, that's all I gotta say.
Well, I agree with you because if you, if you look at some of the funds in some of the areas that we're not spending, you know, it's, it's, how long?
I realize that we gotta have a, a budget that's gonna, gonna suffice us. We can't, uh, uh, a person working on the road has to have material, he has to have equipment, he has to have this other stuff. We got a bridge down there, we gotta match up some money, we're down South Palm, not, not far away. We got a lot of things that are coming.
Yep.
But I mean, we gotta try to do the best, manage the best we can for the people of this town. Because I'm, I'm sure people are watching this meeting. I'm sure they are, because we're talking money.
Yeah, but again, but again, the reason why I brought it up, when I brought it up, was the same reason I, I repeat myself again tonight, is, is having a little money on hand, I'm not talking about putting a lot of money in this, for when those occasions occur, like the BCR says, okay, we're gonna get a grant to fix this stream bed, uh, road beside it. And all of a sudden, you need five or six thousand bucks and we don't have it. We, we, we can, but we end up spending and then that budget falls in the wrong direction. We planned for it, we're ahead of the game. And a little bit, and I, I'm with you, Ronnie, like I said, twenty-five thousand, I think is max we should go. And if five thousand where we start this year, I'm okay with that. I'd like to see ten, but if you don't think taxpayers can do that, let's do five, that's a quarter of a cent. And it's.
I don't care, we gotta start somewhere, this gravel thing has, has become a big issue because before we had a gravel bed. We don't have no gravel bed no more, so we gotta get some. Either you gotta buy it, you gotta pay for it, either that or, or.
Or we gotta.
Because you can't just scrape, scrape the roads without putting nothing on it.
We either have to find a way to use what gravel we have in that gravel bed, not to be just backfill, but to use it along with others. And I think that's the appropriate way of, of managing that when we get to it. But right now, this is to do with the capital and, a capital part of the budget, that's all for the road. Get what the exact words are.
It's Road Capital Project.
Yeah, and, and I think that's appropriate. And again, I don't know what you guys wanna put in it for money, I'm, I'll leave that up to you guys, but I think it's, it's, uh, you put it in your packet, what she felt it, uh, the wording is, that's what we used last time. And, uh, according to this, we'll allocate it from the road undesignated surplus funds to this fund. You have sixteen thousand dollars that you're, got an undesignated surplus. You either give it all back to them, or you put five thousand in here and you give them back eleven.
Or you could take half of it.
Whatever you.
You're giving them back a little bit. They're trying, we're trying to save, we're trying to save a dollar. Or we could put, I'll put that all in and not give them nothing and see how the tax rate floats, see how they like it.
Yeah.
If they like it, well, then I guess we can bump it up like the school does. Drop ten percent every year.
They seem to vote for it every time.
That's the only thing I'm saying, I don't, I don't mind if we got a little, but I want it especially kept for that designated purpose.
Yeah, I agree with.
Not to be shipped around for something else, to buy, you know, something that, that has nothing to do with the highway department.
Road Capital Projects.
That's right.
Where it should be, that's it.
That's all.
When you need it.
Figure out what you wanna put in there.
Well, you know, sometimes with the general, we use the capital fund to, to, well, you just use it to, to fund the extra expense for the town plan. There's certain things that come along and.
That's right, that, that, they don't come along every year.
No.
You know, that, that's what you're looking for, you're looking for that, that something that you wanna get done that year because you know you get, there's something else you can get out of that. The plan, we're hoping to get grant money out of that if we get it done.
Yeah.
This is the same here, we're hoping to get grant money by utilizing some funds.
But even still, that grant money, a lot of it, we still have to match on.
Do we, yeah, that's what, yeah.
A minimum, what, ten percent? Or twenty, twenty percent, so.
So that's.
I mean, we gotta think about Snake Hill, I mean, there's a, there's a number of projects we're looking at here, the Bridge Deck on, on Main Street. I mean, these are, these are big ticket items here.
You could easily, like I said, run pretty near a hundred thousand this year on matches if.
Well, Bridge, the Bridge Fund, we have Bridge money. I don't know how much, I don't have that fund thing in front of me, but we have money in the Bridge Fund. We have money in culverts, like he, like we were saying.
The culvert fund has some money.
But what we don't have money for.
I thought we just used all that on, uh, we used a lot of it on.
No, no.
A lot, a good part of it, though, right here on Mount Anthony Road.
We did, but we put a bunch back with.
We get money back.
When you got your reimbursement.
Still, I think we used.
We did, we, I.
Still used quite a bit.
But basically, but basically what you're looking at is, is that, uh, that's the sort of stuff, I'm, I'm, I'm concerned about things coming down the pipe that we don't know about. That's really what I'm looking at, because of this new water bill and, and now they're talking about even increasing some of the restrictions. I mean, Jesus.
That's the latest one right there.
You know, there's no money when they do this stuff, they just slam you with it. Yeah.
We've got your general Bridge Fund built up to two hundred and seventy-two thousand, almost two hundred and seventy-three thousand.
Yeah, we got plenty in the Bridge Fund.
For Bridge Fund, okay.
In the.
You better add a maybe, put something in it, because.
The Bridge Deck is a million dollars.
Well, the one.
Just the deck.
So if you got a twenty percent match here.
It was over five million down there.
But, but that's just the deck.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, well, what we, what we need to do is work, you know, when we were done, we only paid five percent for the bridge in North Palm. So if we can get away with a ten percent, if it, we've gotta work the legislature as well as the rest.
Well, this is what we've done so far, we've added another twenty thousand to the general Bridge Fund. Okay, on top of the figures that I just gave you.
And that's because we did that the year before. Maybe.
Doesn't mean you have to do it again, but you do, we gotta get, that, really, you can think about it, was intended for that major bridge.
That's right.
Well, and if you're looking at ten percent, it's two, two million dollar job, you're in the ballpark. If it's twenty percent, you're not in the ballpark. So. But, but the whole project comes to, those are the sort of things, again, I think you'd need to beat up.
And the culvert fund, how we looking there?
The culvert fund?
Ninety-four, what did this thing, pencil?
Uh, no, we got.
Forty-one?
I think.
It's forty-one eight plus ninety-four five that just came back.
Okay.
Okay, so, yeah, so it's a two.
Okay.
So you got a hundred and thirty.
Okay.
Culvert looks good, Bridge looks good.
Blacktop could be a little better, but.
Yeah. What did we put in it this time, the Blacktop?
Well, you put a hundred and fifty.
And we got fifty-four, so we got two hundred thousand.
And equipment, we're looking okay for equipment?
Seventy thousand here.
Again?
How much did we put in it?
Uh, seven, seventy-five, I think, right, or seventy.
What do you want in the equipment fund?
Yeah, what did we put in it?
We proposed budgeting twenty-two thousand.
Yeah, so you're, you're, you're about ninety some odd thousand dollars. Twenty to be, and you're talking about buying a truck for the lease purchase, I would hope.
Right.
Uh, a truck with an all-season body, plow, wing, a single axle, approximately one sixty-five to one seventy-five. About twenty-five to thirty thousand more if you wanna go tandem. There really isn't a lot of.
Difference there at all.
No, no, no.
Where's the heck out of me?
No, well, I think, my opinion on that is we, we oughta have another tandem. We don't need a wing on it, we got one with a wing on it. We only got fifty-three miles of road.
That's right.
Let's get real here. We used to do it with a grader, I'm sure we could do it with one of them machines. We don't need the wing, but you're carrying twice as much material. And you need a bigger truck to carry the material.
I think I agree to that.
I do too.
The haul of gravel and things like that.
All, hauling soil around like you did so far this year, that's, that's gotta be a big plus.
And that, then they're, they're very, very positive in tandems as far as, you know, they got a lot of traction, they, you know, they're not tend to, they're a lot more sta, and they'll come out of a mud hole.
What did we put down on the last, what did we put down on the last one, seventy?
Yes, we put a lot down on it, we did.
We put seventy, I think, and board a hundred and thirty.
We've gotta look at the fact you have payments, you got.
Yeah, I know, and you have to budget for them, remember?
That's right.
Okay, okay, so, okay, but back to the capital, Road Capital Projects, what do you, what do you wanna do, guys?
I suggest we take half of that money.
Eight?
Yep.
That's behind me.
Okay, so the voters of the town of Bala vote to establish Road Capital Project Fund and allocate eight thousand from the road undesignated surplus funds to this fund. That's what it would read, and you agree to that?
I do.
I do.
Yep.
All right, that's what we're gonna.
Said it's a half a cent, and any shocker for the people, they don't think. Yep. But, like I say, I bet we're gonna continue, as long as I'm around here, we're gonna watch that till that's where it goes.
Okay, what else?
Don't go to buying something else.
That's, I agree with you, twenty percent from that, good enough for the things. Okay, next thing is.
We also.
We're able to go something?
Talked about, um, uh, another boom mower, we kinda talked about doing something with that.
Yeah, you were gonna get it.
For this year, wow. For one, like we have, it's about twenty thousand dollars. A mid-mout, the only one you could put that on is a John Deere, that's sixty thousand dollars. Goes from a different outfit. They do have one, you can put on the back that kinda swings over more, so you can see it beside you rather than craning your neck back. He hasn't got back a price on that one yet.
Again, with things like that, we need to know what a lease purchase type thing is, because it's one thing putting ten thousand a year on something for five years versus trying to find sixty thousand dollars out of your equipment fund when you got, buying tandems.
Put sixty thousand dollars on a ten thousand dollar tractor.
Yeah, just not.
Doesn't make sense.
No, 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 that's ridiculous.
Have you looked around to see if there's anything else here?
The state has them used, but I don't know if they're used or they're used.
Well, it's like ours is used, but it's been used and used and used. It's worn out.
Takes a beating.
Yeah, it's been welded ten zillion times.
Flail machine's a lot rougher than a, especially from what you guys do it with, for.
Also, I thought of just buying a new mower head for it this year. Seeing what the price is, you know what I mean?
Yep.
Just buy the head and.
It makes more sense.
Will the rest of it handle it?
Yeah, we'll get the same size head.
Is that a drum or a rotary thing, what is that?
It's a rotary, it's a flail.
Flail machine's got a lot of little teeth.
It's got, yeah, it's got knives on it, just double knives. And it's got a bunch of them on there, just spins around and cuts it.
It seems to do a nice job.
It does do a good job, yeah.
Well, it's rough on side roads with the wire and.
Maybe the thing to do is find out what it costs for a head, you know? Head's gonna cost you fifteen, the whole thing costs you sixty. He might be better off with a lease purchase.
I'd say that was aside, um, but the regular one is twenty. And I'll have to see what the.
Yeah, what a head.
The trouble is our tractors are a little small to handle anything real big. We basically have what our tractors will handle.
Well, they seem to do a good job, I mean.
Did you see them at the auction we went? What's up now? Never saw any of that thing.
Okay.
But I will check also.
They're not interested in that old tractor we have down in the warehouse, are they?
In trade, sure, there you go.
Nice to get rid of that.
You'd be surprised what they'll take sometimes.
Well, you know, what we thought about that is Ronnie talked about maybe picking up a broom, if you could pick up a broom, you know, uh, maybe mount it on the old tractor.
Just use it.
The front, yeah, yeah, we could mount it on the front.
Yeah, just use it, yeah.
Have you seen any of them, mount on a snowplow frame on a front pickup?
Yeah, there's a lot of them, there seems to be.
They work out pretty good.
For the front.
Right, it gets it all.
And the guy doesn't eat all the dust.
Just hydraulic.
Works the same as the snowplow, except you got a hydraulic turnip.
The state uses them.
Yeah.
Put them right on the, on trucks.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, something to check into, I guess, what else you got?
Well, now we'll go to the gravel. So, uh, the Strohmires have agreed to four dollars a yard in place. Seventy, um, sorry. In that pile, there's roughly twenty-three thousand, three hundred yards. Seventy-six hundred is ours and fifteen-seven is on Strohmires. We'd be roughly talking sixty-two thousand, eight hundred dollars for the fifteen thousand, seven hundred yards.
Yep.
You split it up amongst everything we can get, it's about two seventy-three a yard.
Raw.
Raw.
Yeah.
And then we gotta process it.
Yeah, you're looking, last year was five forty-five. Also, though, you, you keep in mind the sand. You know, we can put up, you, you get them in there to, to.
When you say it was five forty-five, was that them processing our gravel?
Yes, yes, yes. We can also have them do a pile of sand, because there's a lot of sand in that. And actually, what sand they made last year out of our own material was really nice. And that came out of crushing the stone and stuff, and it had a lot of stone in it. That was really nice stuff. So, again, uh, we can do four thousand yards of gravel, or we can do five thousand yards of gravel. We should do probably four thousand yards of sand.
How much we putting in the gravel crushing?
That one would be on the sheet.
Generally, five thousand yards is enough. Not when you look at what we made this year and what we bought.
Evidently, you can get more.
Gravel, brush, yeah, thirty.
You don't really wanna get it.
Put thirty?
Yeah, we're putting, we're proposing to put thirty in.
Yeah.
Okay, we're proposing to put thirty in and we have, just look at this here. Thirty, so it's sixty.
Well, you're gonna use thirty this year, it won't be sixty, it'll be, you know what I'm saying? Because we'll use that thirty in April.
Yeah, this money's not available until July.
And this, that's right. But we also have, um, in the gravel, sand, uh, riprap purchase, we have forty-five thousand in that. Now that's for our sand. See, last year.
Are you saying we're gonna get it out of this mound versus?
The sand, yeah.
So, so we could use that, some of that forty-five thousand?
Yeah. Yeah, what we do is, is do the sand out of that and rather than buying the sand out.
Yes, so basically you're looking at, what I'm trying to, and the price that's being offered is that, uh, one year cost up or payment wise, or can pay two years, or how's it work?
With a.
Are we gonna do all this here, this fifteen-seven?
No. No, we, uh, basically you got, um, twenty-three thousand yards, right?
And how many yards are you gonna take out in a year, though?
Twenty-three, three. Again, if we stick with the four and then four of sand, that'd be eight thousand, or we can go five of gravel and four of sand.
However, you're looking at the total between ours and theirs, or you're looking at just what would come out of what we purchase?
Well, it's gonna come out of actually both of them.
Well, that, but.
Because the sand will come out.
Yeah, well, I'm looking at, I'm looking at the price that you came up with, that you're telling, that you want sixty-two eight, is that what I'm hearing?
That, that's a total just for the fifteen thousand, seven hundred dollars, or yards, I'm sorry.
Which is on them.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so the question I'm asking is, is how much of their yardage are you gonna do that year? Okay, so, so the question I'm asking is, is how much of their yardage are you gonna do that year? Are they gonna have us pay for all of this upfront or are we gonna pay for just what we take out each year?
I would, if it were me, I would do the deal for sixty-two-eight and have the pile there to do as we please.
Well, that answers your question about where are we gonna get all this additional yardage? And if we buy...
Money, money.
And if we buy it up?
Money, not yardage. We know what yardage is, we need the money.
You know, well, you said when they were doing eight thousand yards.
They, you know, um, they probably...
The money's sixty-two-eight.
Yeah, and we don't have to come up with all that in one year. Probably if we split it in two years.
That's what I'm thinking, because what you just told me that you had in this gravel, the forty-five thousand in the riprap, and then you got thirty thousand in your gravel.
Yeah.
You know, I think we could work that out based on what we had this year and what we'll get next year. With the agreement, as long as we have two years to do it, if we have to pay it all up this year, you know, come July first, then it's a different story.
Yeah, no, we, we won't actually.
Now, do we need a lawyer to drop this agreement?
Yeah, we'll need a contract.
So we gotta get a lawyer first, right?
Well, we, we can...
We might gotta get the Vermont League of Cities and Towns...
Oh, okay.
Do the contract.
Yeah. This, this is a simple purchase.
It isn't, that isn't too complicated, I don't think.
No, it's a simple...
Right, we've already, we've already had our engineer go in and map it all out and do the calculations.
Well, the thing is pretty well cut and dry, you just gotta add the paperwork. What we spent was twenty-one thousand eight hundred dollars out of that thirty for gravel. What we did also though, we put up a thousand yard of stone.
Last year.
So...
So, what I'm looking at is, is we're gonna, I'm hoping to spend about the same as what we spent last year and come into a contractual agreement for this year. Then if next year we know we have to spend the same to get the rest of it out, then we do that. We, we just budget accordingly.
We have, we have the purchase of the gravel, plus we have the...
Crushing.
The crushing. Last year we only had the crushing, we didn't purchase anything.
Yeah, but it costs more, bucking it, bucking something more?
Four.
No, because he's saying between, all the gravel we get out of it, it'd be two hundred, two dollars and seventy-five cents or something.
Seventy-three.
Seventy-three cents, that's what we're gonna pay this year. So, how much will it cost us to crush it? Is it another four, four dollars, five dollars?
If we just took ours this year, it'd be nothing, but I mean, you, you, we gotta buy the pile.
Yeah, and that's where I'm coming from. We're gonna pay for the pile, do the math. How much are you paying for the pile this year? How much of it, all of it? If you're gonna do all of it, then you do the math and then you decide what the crushing is. How many dollars are we talking total for what we crushed this year with it? And if we're gonna crush eight thousand, ten thousand yards, how many are we gonna crush?
So, if you want five thousand yards of gravel times what it was last year, five forty-five. That's what you're looking for to do five thousand yards of gravel.
So you're looking at twenty-seven-five? And then if you want, are you gonna do a half of what this sixty-two-eight is that year? Or you're gonna do it all in one year?
I'd do it, I'd split it in two years.
Yeah, so you're looking at thirty-one something on top of that? Say thirty-two, you're looking at fifty-nine thousand, say sixty thousand dollars. Okay, you just told me you had forty-five and thirty.
Well, wait a minute now, that, we didn't talk about the sand yet.
Okay, are you gonna get sand out of any of this or you're not?
Well, yes, but the sand, if you go four thousand yards of sand, is gonna be again...
How much? That's what we're after, we wanna know bottom line.
Same thing again.
Same thing again.
Processing is processing.
Yeah, that's what we wanna know. It's four thousand, not, what was it before, five thousand you did or did you do?
Well, no, we did, I did five thousand actually.
Yeah. As a gravel.
That's a thousand more than we did last year. Twenty-seven-two, so if you did...
Yeah, so look, hardly anything, you said twenty-eight, twenty-eight, which was like, just ball fire figures.
So then if we did...
Fifty-six plus the, plus the sixty-two. Hundred and eighteen.
So you're looking at about twenty-one-eight for sand if you do four thousand yards.
Yeah, I said twenty-eight, twenty-one takes seven off then, but basically you're looking at, say a hundred and ten. A hundred and ten, and we basically, basically said we got seventy-five. So you need to put money in? Well, actually, is that, no, that was half the price, right?
Think we gotta put more money in?
Yeah, so it sounds to me, it sounded like you need another thirty thousand at least in gravel crushing.
So, yeah, you, well, you're forty-five, but keep in mind too, out of that forty-five thousand, if we do need stone, riprap, um, if we do buy material like from Peckham's or something, it comes out of that too. You know what I mean? That's not all sand. Sand...
So tell us the number here you need.
Well, no, I'm just thinking, sand cost us, this year, uh, what do we, twenty? No, more than ten.
At least ten.
Twice?
Yeah, it was twenty-six...
No, no, a yard, I was gonna say a yard, ten dollars a yard, right?
Yeah, um...
The sand costs ten dollars a yard?
It was nine, nine...
They should be paid ten dollars a yard.
Nine fifty, plus four fifty for hauling.
Oh, that's right, hauling, okay.
Is where that ran at.
So we can haul our own this, this year.
Especially if we get another tandem.
Well, it's gonna be right there in our yard.
Yeah.
Well, you'll have to...
I can still have that northbound.
You'll have to do the warehouse.
Do that, days that people aren't busy.
All right, folks, what's the magic number?
So...
Keep moving up on us here. We're looking at another fifty grand?
Probably to be safe.
Times...
Two and a half cents?
Okay, we're looking at twenty-one-eight for the sand. And then the...
We made gravel last May, we were out by the end of June.
We got a lot of roads and put a good amount of gravel on the wild, they really did their job with the gravel on, but...
Well, the question is do you need it?
Look at the mud in some of these roads, they had the...
Yeah, do we need to do the, we don't, we don't know until the season comes whether we're gonna use the same amount or not.
Okay, so...
If you have it, you won't need it.
Basically...
Murphy's law.
If we do five thousand of gravel, four thousand of sand, we're looking at fifty thousand dollars. Plus fifty, sixty, seventy, eighty. So you're looking at, uh...
Eighty on top of the fifty, a hundred and thirty total?
No, 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 no. That'll be for the crushing, that's what it'll cost us to crush nine thousand yards roughly.
All right, so say, round it up to fifty, you've got fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Okay, that's the crushing. Now, and that means all the crushing need that you need.
So now, we add another thirty-two or so.
Purchase.
If we're gonna purchase on top of that.
The number I was trying to come up with, I had a hundred and eighteen, so you gotta put another thirty-two on there. You're looking at eighty-two thousand.
Yeah.
Okay, now out of this forty-five and thirty that's there already, none of this is coming or that we put there?
Eighty-one thousand.
You got thirty and forty-five thousand there, is that all gonna be spent and we gotta put another eighty-two? Or are you saying some of that eighty-two is this money that's already here?
No, it should be what we have here, because out of that thirty, we'll spend twenty-seven thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
Crushing.
Just for the crushing.
Yep.
If it stays the same.
Okay.
Um, out of the sand money, we'll spend twenty-one-eight. But again, like I said, um, out of that forty-five thousand, if we...
But still means we need thirty-two.
Well, to kinda break even, but now, uh, if you look at this expenditure report. Gravel crushing fund. See, out of the sand, gravel and riprap, we have nine thousand dollars left out of that forty-five. Okay? The gravel, excuse me, crushing fund, we still have the thirty because we haven't...
Used it, yeah.
Crushed yet, yeah. But we have none in the sand.
Yeah, you have eight thousand bucks.
Well, what we did is we had to use it for all our stone lined ditches and stuff. We did get it back, but we couldn't put it...
Back there, no.
Back there.
Correct.
So, even though, you know, we spent it, we did, we, I don't know if we got it back yet or not, did we? The forty.
I think we still have one that hasn't come back.
The forty on that one, yeah.
Okay, so... Now, what I'm hearing from what you just told me, is it's still about...
What did I write down there?
Thirty thousand bucks or so, sure. So that's why I'm asking, did we put this in the gravel purchasing now? And make that sixty versus thirty? And it covers us, or you put it in the purchase, uh, stuff, because you're actually buying, right? That thirty thousand you're gonna spend to, uh...
So you just put that in that gravel, sand, riprap purchase?
Yeah, we put that in the purchase, thirty thousand more. You guys got all that?
So that forty-five's gonna change to seventy-five?
Yep. Then you got your money, you need to do it and do the deal. That's a set and a half, folks, added to.
Oh, we need the material, I guess.
We're gonna buy it anyway somewhere.
That's right, that's right.
And I'll bet, and if we're not gonna buy it all, that we don't get some of our own, which is what we're gonna do here, it's gonna cost us even more.
Well, you gotta knock the bank down regardless.
That's right.
Before they come. You don't really have an option.
That's right, so, everybody agree, seventy-five?
Agreed.
Yeah.
That's where it goes. You got it, Linda? Okay, that should, uh, now we just need to get some sort of contract drawn up so our lawyers can look at it or the leagues or somebody, and we can move forward. Put a two-year purchase agreement, so half, one year and a half.
And then how long, and then in a gr, and then we wanna make sure we have a understanding of how long we have to work with that property, right? And there's a driveway that's gotta be re, put back in when we're done?
The, um, right away, yeah, we'll just have to...
Those are all things that have to be written up in it?
Actually, we won't touch it right away now.
Okay.
Not with this car.
Okay.
We're gonna save money, some, not a whole lot, by what we're doing. But again, you know, we do need the material. It gets down to, do we buy it, uh, from somebody else? Then you got transportation, you know, you look at your options and...
Now, I think you've sowed us on it, I think, uh, we budgeted for it and I think we're okay. We just now need to see the contract to make sure we think it is. Once that gets drawn up, then we can finalize this thing.
We can, actually, if you wanna kinda keep the same, take fifty thousand out of the blacktop fund this year.
Uh, scary, blacktop, we never know. Just in case something comes in from somewhere else, it'd be better. You want all South Stream, right, or a good portion of it?
Well, I think it's from behind on blacktop.
That'll, yeah.
If you leave it there, you don't use it's one thing, but if you need it, it's already there.
That's only fifty thousand putting in there that would go on the, into the fund if we didn't spend blacktopping.
Can't keep robbing Peter Pavel.
Do we really need to purchase another truck for July one?
Well, he's saying one of them's really bad.
Well, we're just putting a lot of money into it, and it's the same one...
Right.
That you guys have been talking about...
Was it about two thousand nine or something?
Way before I got here.
We're putting more money into that truck than we would if we were making a payment on a brand new one.
Yeah, we put like five thousand bucks in it, you know, this year.
Still can do it again.
And it's still, yeah. It's still not right. If any of you guys wanna kinda look at these, they're right here. You guys chasing?
Is there any trade-in on it much?
I'm hoping.
When we write this, when we write the spec on it, I'd like, I'd like to see us have it, have them give us a price trade-in and then also an option for us to put it out to bid.
But yeah, oh, yeah, we definitely wanna put it out anyhow.
You can't use the plow off the other truck, oh, nine?
We can, but that's again been shuffled through...
Okay, okay.
How many trucks?
At least three times.
Yeah, so if, if you're gonna do it...
No, if it's that old, it isn't worth it, no.
Well, that's, that's...
I'm just asking, that's all.
They just...
You should look at them, they're, they're pretty rough.
Yeah.
Okay, guys.
One of them, the whole nose broke off.
What else we got besides gravel purchasing at this road? Is there anything else you see that we need to add or change or? Nah, have Linda put that in and let's, uh, next Tuesday we're meeting?
Yes.
Let's finalize this budget that day, see if we can't move and finalize it. Everybody in agreement? And that way there, if something perks up or something, and we'll bring it up that day, but right now I think we're where we're at.
All right, so basically we just made one adjustment to the gravel.
Yep.
Purchase line.
That's it, and we did the one, and we did the one ballot article.
One ballot article, using the undesignated funds surplus.
Yep. Okay, that take care of the road. We'll move on and...
We finalize Tuesday and we'll have a new printout.
Yep, have a fresh printout, we can move on and approve it. Thank you very much, Joel, you've been very helpful.
Just kinda see what you need to do with, um, you know, getting an attorney from leagues or somebody to drop some kind of an agreement.
They're looking, they're looking for us to drop the agreement or are they drawing something that we run by our attorney?
I think looking for us to drop an agreement. I think that would be on us. They are right now pursuing the Act two fifty permit to take more material out of there, which you and I talked about.
Yep. Good.
Like I told them, I think it might go a lot smoother knowing that a town, yeah.
Yeah, when they're pursuing that, if, if we do come to a purchase agreement, we can make part of the purchase agreement is informing the Act two fifty board that it's municipal use.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
If, if we sign a contract. Cause then it will be a municipal use. If we don't, then of course it's theirs.
Yeah.
Okay, no, that works for us, works for them. Okay. General, where am I? Losing my stuff here.
Just here.
Ballot articles. Well, I lost my agenda. Throw it away? There we go, there we go. There we go. Okay, general budget preliminary fiscal year nineteen figures. You want to go through this tonight or do you wanna take this home with you now that you have a printout? Look at it and on the twenty-third?
Yeah, I would like you, I would prefer you to get home and look at it. We have made, Ellen and I have made all the adjustments to it that we can ourselves
Okay.
As of today. Everything that I know that needed to be changed in any way, we've done.
And you got two things, guys. You got the what's been spent, the incumbent.
Yep, that's a fresh printout.
So you know where you are and then you've got the compared to budget. So you wanna look at those two and uh
So next year, so when you meet again on Tuesday, you're looking to try to finalize your road and then start working.
On the general.
On the general.
Sounds like a plan.
See, there's one new ballot article. Today was the cutoff to the nonprofits. There's only one new one. It's five hundred dollars. Um, and we don't have the senior citizens one any longer and we don't have the one for the community fireworks this year either. So it was a little, little bit of, it went down a little bit. If I'm not sure a little.
Okay. Okay. And if there's any other board ballot articles to discuss tonight or if we don't, uh, they've gotta be done by next Thursday, folks. The latest.
Yes, 'cause I I have to finish putting the warning together.
Nope, okay.
Preferably, I wanted to formally sign, sign off on the town warning no later than February one. It has to be posted February four by law. That's cutting it, but you know, if you if you
Well, Tuesday
If you can finish it on the on the twenty-fifth, I think it is, great. All the better because it gives David more time to for our auditor to get it to the printer.
Yep.
Because that's always pressuring for him because we give it
We're still kinda talking about budget.
While we were talking about the the general budget, you're gonna take home with you and look at?
Okay, just a question. Do we have any money left in the municipal fund, building fund?
Yes, we do.
Yes, you do.
So is there is there money in there to take some work in this office?
Where's the funds? Where's the funds? No, you you have capital.
Okay, that's the one, okay.
And building maintenance. There's a building maintenance line that you have and then you have capital. I don't know. We probably spent the maintenance by now. I would assume. Let's look at the incumbent.
We have a hundred and ninety-six thousand five hundred and fifty-one in your municipal
Says municipal office fund.
Can only be used for the new building.
Okay, so can't use it to fix anything up in here then?
Yep. Now, unless you're gonna make this a new building, tear it down, build a new one.
New paint?
No, no, but there's a maintenance line, too. We've spent all the maintenance, building maintenance money on in the general fund here.
Maybe maybe not or or maybe you will be by the time
We're done.
If you're gonna buy, if you're gonna do the alarm system, that would come out of the maintenance line. You wanna take it from someplace else.
No.
We never did discuss where the money was coming from.
No, we can do that. Let me see where the
So that would be helpful to know.
Yep. See where we're at. And the general fund does have a capital fund. I don't know how much is in that now. How much is in that? We've been spending that, too.
Eighty-one thousand.
What we might wanna do, unless you think you're gonna build a municipal office right away, we're putting thirty thousand dollars in there. In the general fund, think about this, that you might wanna put, move that to capital if you're really gonna do some capital projects on this program.
Well, I think we gotta read our report and see.
And you wanna read it because there's some options that exist.
Yeah.
They're not cheap, but
Well, that's why I'm
It's cheaper than moving into another building.
Well, that's what I'm thinking.
For the time being, I mean
Well, if you're gonna buy some time, I'm just saying you're putting thirty in and if you gotta spend twenty here, buy yourself some time.
I was talking eight on the floor a couple of years ago.
See, building maintenance, we only got five thousand in. What you might do is take that thirty thousand and put down a building maintenance, ten thousand of that. You gotta, we gotta look and look at this and look at your expenditures and decide. Because and I'll look the report. I haven't looked at the report, so I can't tell you anything at all yet, any of that. Okay? With that said
Building maintenance, yeah, building maintenance, we spent over ten and we we put ten in.
Yeah, so I'm thinking we might wanna change and do a little something different.
Right, that was before we we had any report that or anything, but we
Yeah, and again, without going up, I I was reiterate the fact if we're not building a building next year, we might wanna look at what we're doing here because you're putting thirty thousand in. You said you had a hundred and
Ninety, ninety-something.
Yeah, so
But if you don't keep putting putting that money in at that rate
Yep.
Then you can't stay here forever in this building.
Okay. With that said
So boards ballot articles. So do we have to do something for the town clerk on fees?
Yeah, I don't know what the, yes, I don't know what that is. Somebody's gotta look that up and see what it is with Vermont, things of city.
You said Sue already had it.
I thought so, too. She's not here, so I can't tell you. Can't speak for her.
That's what you told me. I thought you had it.
No, I don't have it. I don't have it.
When is Sue back?
She is due back probably the
For the
Thursday?
For the Thursday meeting?
I wanna say Thursday meeting. Can't swear to it. She might be back before then, but she I don't I don't think she'll be here Tuesday.
I just was surprised that she hadn't said anything that she was going. I mean, it was
Yeah, she probably
It was a surprise to me, I mean
Probably said something to me, but Cindy and her talk more than I do, so I just, it's woman talk.
I'm required to tell you when I'm going somewhere. These guys all tell you when you're taking a vacation. It's not a big deal. It's just nice to know for planning purposes.
Yep, yep. Send her email, say, when are you getting back?
Why don't you? You're the chairman.
Well, you're asking the question.
I'm just trying to help plan. If you're trying to write a ballot article and somebody's been working on it.
Yeah, put me uh
I don't wanna
Throw me in the fire, tell
I don't wanna duplicate efforts.
Throw me in the fire, say Nelson said he didn't have the ballot article, but you might. Send her email. I'm sure she's still reading that. And she'll holler and say, yeah, I gave it to him. Probably even some email buried somewhere, but
Why don't you, why don't you contact? Okay, so is that where we are on the agenda? Where are we on the agenda?
We're at the end.
We're at the end.
We're done.
Done. Just waiting for a motion to adjourn.
That's what I'm waiting for. Was that one?
There it is.
So moved.
All those paper eyes. There, we're out. It's done.